I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Alright. So, we're missing Matt and Courtney so far, so maybe they'll show up. I'd like a motion to the accept the agenda. Motion by Tom, seconded by Chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, the agenda is accepted. Next on the list is the minutes from our May fifteenth meeting. I have read through them, I didn't find any changes that I wanted to input into it. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from May fifteenth?
Also move.
Motion by Leo, seconded by Doug, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so the meeting minutes from May fifteenth are approved. Next on the agenda is public comment, so I'm gonna open it up for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Okay, let's move on then to unfinished business, of which there is none, and then the next part of the agenda is new business. This is a public hearing to consider the zoning text amendment twenty-five-one regarding regulations for alternative energy systems, removal of the P five zoning districts, and new lighting regulations. And B, consideration of extension to the site plan review rules for the tow yard at one-eight-six-five-one old U S twelve. From a timing perspective, do we want to deal with the tow yard first, or is... Yeah, I still wasn't sure, okay, so then we... No, that's fine, I just wasn't sure. I didn't want to keep them waiting around in case they didn't want to. Yeah, I don't hear them, okay. Okay, so, um, let's move on to the zoning text moment regarding regulations for alternative energy systems, which is a big one on the packet tonight. Scott, I see you did send out a revision here for packages or part of the...
Yeah, so on that, there was just, uh...
Kelvin versus Kelvin?
Actually, uh, I bet I still had Kelvin spelled the wrong way, so I made that quick change.
Okay, no, that's fine. Alright, so we've been through this a lot, and I'd like to actually run through the attorney comments. Uh, we can, does anyone is... Alright, so I'm gonna back up for public hearing, thanks for the reminder, Scott. So I have a motion to open it for a public hearing. Motion by Tom, seconded by Leo, motion passes.
For a point of interest, I'd just like to make a comment regarding public comments. I would ask to keep the minutes simple, and, uh, because this is a quasi-legal, the minutes will be a quasi-legal document, or could be, so, um, if we could have the public comments be made to the board, to the Planning Commission, and, uh, if we can wait to answer the questions of the public until all public comments are finished, that would simplify the process, rather than getting into a back-and-forth casual conversation, which can get rather convoluted. So I'm just asking that we follow that set of rules.
I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that, because sometimes the, I like the pro and con, but I also understand there's the meeting minutes and the challenge of taking those two, so. Let's try, I guess the thing is, we need to be concise and, um, make it much easier on the note takers, right? Is that a fair alternative?
Yes, to keep it concise, but, um, if it's possible to wait to answer the questions, till the end of the speaker, at least, that would be helpful, rather than to he-said, she-said kind of thing going on.
Okay, well, we can try that and see how it goes.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's hard to remember, though, so.
Good evening, uh, thank you, uh, my name is Michael Van Gore, uh, Township President. Um, just wanted to address the Planning Commission and say thank you for all the hard work that's gone into, uh, these revisions to the ordinance, um, and I would urge you to approve these this evening and send them to the Township Board. No questions, thank you very much, hopefully that's brief, thank you.
Patrick?
Thank you, uh, Patrick Ziski, Sylvan Township President. Uh, I would second what Mr. Van Gore said, um, I think these ordinances are quite well done. Um, it's been a long time coming for the renewable energy ordinance, and I can appreciate what all, at least what some of you have gone through for a couple of years. Um, I have, I have two comments about the renewable energy ordinance, um, that you, you may still consider, I think you might have already considered one of them, but I'm gonna put it out there anyway. Uh, the first comment is for the accessory use solar, that you might consider relaxing the lot coverage percent in, in the case of a ground-mounted solar array. Because solar panels are quite unlike other accessory structures, they, by their nature, need space to capture sunlight. A modest relaxation in that requirement would allow people who don't have a whole lot of room on their lot necessarily, and maybe don't have good, good roof orientation either, to put solar panels on their property for their, for their accessory use, this is not about the commercial stuff. I would not, I would not ask that you redo, that you increase the lot coverage requirement in general, but just as applied to the solar array, so the house still can't be any bigger, or anything like that. So you, you would still have the lot coverage requirement that goes with the underlying zoning district, and then a separate expanded requirement that covers the house, all structures, and the solar array, if that makes sense. Yeah, um, modestly, maybe up to twenty percent or something like that, I mean, nobody should have solar panels on their whole yard, right? But, but, but ten percent, which I think it is in the Ag District, is kind of low. Um, second, second question, and this is more of a question than anything, I see that for the principal use solar arrays, the big commercial arrays, um, there is something added saying that you cannot have those north of I ninety-four, and I'm, I'm not sure, I, I missed the last Planning Commission meeting, I'm not sure why that was added, but I'd urge you to reconsider that, because actually, putting solar arrays nearer to the population that it serves is actually a good idea. The northern part of the township having, having more of the population would have more of the need for energy as well. And it's, it's not true that the solar power goes out on the grid far away and then comes back, it actually, when you have homes in the immediate vicinity of the solar array, they will pull that power off first directly. And if the solar array is therefore close to the homes, it actually puts less of a strain on the transmission system. And that makes it less likely that they're gonna have to build more transmission lines, so it's good, it's good to have the panels close to the population. If it was up to me, we'd put the panels closer to the real big population centers too, you know, like, put them quite closer to Detroit or, or something, but there isn't as much land there, I, I get that. Anyway, within the township, doesn't seem to make a whole lot of difference whether it's south of I ninety-four or, or, or north of I ninety-four, except maybe for aesthetic reasons, but for, for technical reasons, it would be better to put them close to the population as well, thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments from the public? Okay, so I'm gonna close public hearing, um, for the alternative energy systems, um, for the text amendment. So, Scott, I just want to say that you've done a really nice job on this, so. I just, I know it's been a lot of hard work, but I just think it's always good to get that recognized.
You want me to present a little bit?
Yeah.
Just so that everybody's on the same page here.
Yep.
I mean, you guys have all heard it multiple times, because we've seen this ordinance a few times, but obviously, you've seen this even more than me, because you have been working on this ordinance since, uh, two thousand twenty-two, um, when you were working on it with another planner. Um, but I have been working on it, and our first meeting was held in October of two thousand twenty-four, um, where, when we hosted, uh, Madeline Crowe, uh, Croll from the University of Michigan Graham Sustainability Institute, and we went through, um, some of the new state regulations, and then I, I presented, uh, what our surrounding municipalities were doing, and then we gathered information about where you guys wanted to go moving forward with the ordinance. Um, the next meeting that we had, um, I believe we had, does it say here how many meetings we had? We had four, I think, meetings on this since then, and, uh, we've just been revising the ordinance and making sure that it is everything that you want. Um, our last meeting that, that we had on this was in March of two thousand twenty-five. After that meeting, we sent, uh, the proposed draft to the attorney, um, for attorney comments, um. Oh no, actually, the last meeting was May of two thousand twenty-five, and after that meeting is when we sent this to our attorney, and then the attorney came back with some comments, which are, um, shown, uh, as part of the staff report in front of you tonight, and actually, uh, some of his comments have been incorporated into the, uh, draft ordinance that is in front of you tonight, and, um, I can go over, um, his comments, uh, with you on, on those, I mean, I, I believe if you guys reviewed this on your, uh, email, you would have seen this in color, I'm going to have to talk with whoever provides you with your hard copies, because the hard copies I don't think were printed in color, which makes it hard for you to see where the, um, because I color-coded the, the changes in the staff report or in the revisions, so, the one I have in front of me tonight, I can't really see where those changes are anymore, but the red indicates, uh, the attorney's suggestions where I didn't have any, uh, proposed changes, and we can talk about those tonight. The purple, uh, comments are where I did make the proposed changes by the attorney. So some of the attorney's recommendations were opinion, they weren't legal, um, they weren't, uh, talking about the legal enforceability of the ordinance, so they were just personal opinion on things like setbacks and heights and issues like that, um, and uh, we can talk about those as we go through them. And then after we go through the attorney's comments, we'll come back and talk about the process, that we have moving forward, so. Let's start with the attorney's comments here. Um, that starts in Exhibit Two of your staff report. And if you could see this in color, what would hap, what you would see is, uh, under one, um, you have the attorney comment, and then you have my, uh, my staff comment under that, so his first comment, he had on the, on the thing was, on, on our ordinance was for accessory solar energy facilities that ground-mounted, consider whether you, he, he said, "I have some ordinances that limit the height to, uh, to exceed, not to exceed sixteen feet in height." Um, my comment back to that, again, this isn't, you know, usually, this is a really weird, uh, attorney comment letter that I got, because usually they only talk about the legally defensible regulations, they don't give personal opinion on your ordinance, because they haven't been to your eight public hearings that you've had for the ordinance, so they don't know what you've talked about. Yeah.
You're, you're talking about Exhibit Two, I'm looking at what you sent, I don't find an Exhibit Two in here.
Are you talking about the...
Yep, Exhibit Two, it has Buckhelm, Thall, Schreiber, Kaufman coats at the top of it. It's right after page forty-one of Exhibit One, or thirty-nine of Exhibit One.
Yeah, it's the letter.
So it's at the end?
Yep. It doesn't have an, it doesn't say exhibit on the top, but it's the second attached exhibit.
You see the...
I'm with you.
Um, so basically, his comment is above, and then I talk about what we had done to this point. So we obviously had eight public meetings, we had talked about this multiple times, and we, the Planning Commission had decided that accessory, um, solar, ground-mounted solar should be treated like accessory buildings, so they would, uh, have the same requirements. So that was my comment, the number one.
Hold on a second, Scott, so long as we just talk about, I'd just like to open it up to the other board members, just to get...
So you want to go through each one and talk about?
Yeah, I think the ones that were from...
That, that I didn't make the changes?
Yes, I just, because I think the one thing with Mr. Thall is that, him with being his MTA, and he's looked at a lot of these zoning ordinance that have gone through, um, he's, he may be smarter at this than I am, right, so.
Well, it's not smarter, it's that he just wants a different regulation.
Well, I just, um, right now, if we...
I mean, you can make it one foot in height if you want.
No, 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 it's not along those lines, I'm just, um, he wouldn't have, he wouldn't have suggested that unless he had some underlying reasons.
Or bias to solar arrays.
Well, right now, if we were to look at one, um, it would be the, the height of the accessory dwelling unit, correct? What is that, is it twenty feet?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five, so we're looking at a difference of roughly...
Nine feet.
Nine feet in height difference.
And we would have to write a different ordinance, so we'd have to prepare a height requirement for ground-mounted solar arrays, instead of just refer them to accessory ground-mounted solar "Energy facilities shall be subject to the zoning regulations applicable to accessory buildings." So instead of that, you would actually have to have a requirement for a height. And, and we can do that, but that wasn't the way we were directed, I was directed to move forward.
No, I understand, this is part, this is part of the whole feedback loop, right, of, you know, talking about it, um. So if I was, my neighbor came in, he had room, and he had a, he could do a twenty-five-foot panel that would be almost the same height as my house, right?
He could also do a twenty-five garage or structure in that location and put a solar panel on top of it.
Yeah, no, I'm just, you know, trying to visual...
Carport.
This would look like, you know, next to my house, right? I don't, I, um...
We're, we're specifically saying ground-mounted.
Yeah. Ground-mounted.
Well, he couldn't put it on the roof of the garage.
No, but he could come in, build a garage, or build a carport, which is just a structure with a roof, and then put a solar panel on top of it, and then that's a roof-mounted solar panel.
Yeah.
So that, the reason we didn't change the height was, what's the difference between if I put four poles with a solar panel, than if I put four poles with a roof and then a solar panel on top of it, right?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at this, um, heights of what he's suggesting, and I mean, it doesn't sound unreasonable to me, so, but I don't know what the other...
I like the sixteen.
What the other team members think here.
I'm good with, uh, the, you know, as accessory buildings are limited, so keeping it twenty-five feet.
Chris, where are you at?
Still trying to understand the difference between putting it on a roof, I mean, we're sixteen foot if we sit it on the ground right now.
No, it's twenty-five.
It's twenty-five if you have a ground-mounted, which means, I mean, there, I've never seen a twenty-five-foot-tall ground-mounted solar array, but they could be up to twenty-five feet, and the reason you did it is because I could put four poles in the ground with a roof on it, and it can be twenty-five feet high, and then I can put a solar panel on top of it. So what would be the difference between that and a ground-mounted solar panel? A ground-mounted solar panel would just be the panel and not used as a roof structure, because you currently allow accessory buildings to be twenty-five feet tall in that same exact location that you would allow a ground-mounted solar panel.
Do we allow a roof-mounted solar panel anywhere?
Yes, you do, on any building that is allowed, so if you have an accessory building that meets the accessory building regulations, you can have a roof.
About going above twenty-five feet, if we put it on a twenty-five-foot roof.
Yeah, but it's... He's drawing a comparison, so you could have a pole barn that's twenty-five feet tall.
Well, and your roof is at a slant, so your twenty-five feet is to the midpoint of your roof edge. So if you put a solar panel on top of your roof, it doesn't increase the size of, the height of your building.
So we just want to make sure that the top of the solar panel doesn't exceed twenty-five feet.
Well, no, what the attorney has suggested is that we restrict it to sixteen feet, is what I do about this attorney. It's more of a visual thing, from what it...
I don't disagree with that part, I was just trying to understand the analogy here, that was...
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm in the middle, so I don't know. Then...
I don't think we're gonna see a twenty-five-foot solar panel.
I don't think you will either.
Never seen, yeah, even the big commercial stuff.
Alright, so then, I think we're fine on that one, but then, Scott, the other point in here is that, um, may want to add the section, "The setbacks are measured from the property line to the closest point of the system at minimum tilt."
Right, let's, let's go through each of his comments.
Yes, this is in point one, right? Very last part of the paragraph.
Township might want to also add a section that the setbacks are measured from the property line to the closest point of the syst, um, at minimum tilt. That's, you're, that, personally, that's just complicating the entire issue. So, I would just say it the way it's, I mean, we take the setback from wherever we take the setback from, which would be wherever, if that, if that solar panel is, can go like this, you take it to the closest point to the property line. So, and that's, he just is suggesting that we write that additional wording in there, but it does not need to be in the order.
Hmm.
Just like you take your measurement from the closest point of the building to the property line, but it's not written in there that you take your measurement to the closest point of the building, it's just a given that it's taken from the closest point of the building, here.
Okay, I just want to, I'm through each one to make sure, so for point one, attorney's comments, is everyone happy with taking no action?
Well, I think some people want the sixteen feet, but I think more than the people that want the sixteen feet don't have a huge issue, right?
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure we're on the same page, right, so. Well, yeah, you okay leaving one as is?
I guess, yeah.
I am too.
Okay, I know Tom and Doug.
The second one that he had, the township may want to consider accessory solar facility ground-mounted, that they only be located in the side or rear to minimize visual impacts to the right-of-way. So this was the same as the first one, if you allow an accessory building to be there, I mean, why not allow solar panels to be there?
You're just saying keep them out of a front yard?
Yeah, he's, that's his opinion, is that keep, if you don't allow them in the front yard, it will minimize impacts on the right-of-way.
Some people like to build their house at the back of their lot, and then go on ten acres.
Yeah. So. No, it's the same with accessory buildings, right, so that's why you allow them to be in front of the structures, is because...
I agree with you, Scott.
Yeah, so I didn't make the change there. Um, the next one that he has, the primary solar energy setbacks in three C, um, the township should consider increasing the distance to a hundred feet from a fifty, from any property line, fifty feet is pretty close, that sounds very like an attorney would write that. Uh, remember, this is a workable ordinance, so we can go beyond what the state requires. Um, we had talked about this, again, um, through our eight meetings that we had, um, and we ended up with the fifty-foot setback, but yes, you could go with a hundred-foot setback. Um, that would be an easy change, you would just put it in there, it would make your ordinance less workable, um, but that's something you guys can consider.
I have a, uh, two-acre parcel where I'm at, it's nearly square. I had to be fifty feet off both the back and the side for my barn, I'd had to go to a hundred, it would have been kind of below the yard.
This is for...
Solar panel, I want the solar panels between the barn and the property line, which just wouldn't allow even...
Well, this is for primary, so this is for basically commercial grade.
This is not accessory.
This is not accessory anymore, we've...
Step on, there it is.
Yeah, we've moved on to number, the number three, which is for the, for the larger scale.
Way to keep ups.
So primary are when they're selling the product back to the grid.
Yeah, we, yeah, we went through that last time, I was confused in accessory and primary last time.
So, yeah, so he's just suggesting, you know, a higher setback than you had required. Um, under your code, he's not saying that your code is not legally defensible, um, because your code is legally defensible, so.
In that case, we're talking about typically vacant parcels that they're building on, like farm fields and stuff, so there's a lot more room and twenty, a hundred feet from the road.
Yep, so currently, you, you require a hundred-foot setback from the right-of-way and fifty-foot setback for the sides and rear yards. So, um, but it all requires a special use permit, so through the special use permit process, those setbacks could be expanded, meaning if they come in for a special use permit, and you have a neighbor that is impacted, your special use permit standard is, it doesn't, it, uh, reduces the impact on the neighboring adjacent properties. So you could say, you know, more than likely, these will go into areas where you have really large, or much larger lots, you're not going to have a subdivision that has, but let's say they want to put it in next to a subdivision. You might want at that point to expand that setback near that subdivision, and you could do that under the special use permit requirements, because it's a discretionary public hearing process that you'll go through at that point. So in specific cases, when you go through the site plan review and the special use permit for a, uh, large-scale or primary solar facility, you'll look at how these systems impact the neighbors, and you might have things like landscaping that's required, you might have things like larger setbacks in certain areas to keep the impacts off of, um, certain portions of the property, um, those types of things, and that's why we require a special use permit, and that's one of the reasons that we will never be a, um, CREEO, which is an ordinance that matches the state, because the state doesn't allow you to have any discretion under the state rules, but I don't think any township is giving away their discretion to have these as special use permits.
So all primary are special use?
All, all of the primary systems are special use requirements.
If it were a hundred feet, they could come back and say, "Look, we don't, we're not bothering anybody, can we go to fifty?"
They would have to, at that point, ask for a variance, so they would have to then go to the Z B A to get a variance for that, because you can't get less, but you can require more.
Got it, okay.
I think we need to keep in mind, we want to have a workable ordinance, uh, if we make it more restrictive, you're more likely to go to the state, and then we can't have any say over what kind of, um, buffer or anything like that, we have to...
I don't think fifty feet's gonna tell them if it's workable or not, right? That's, that's a...
It's, it's more, it's, it's less discouraging to the utilities if they see...
I would disagree, because if they're, if they're doing a, a large thing, fifty feet on the side of that, it's not gonna make, you know, a lot of difference, in my opinion, anyways, um. I mean, I'm okay taking it to a hundred, I mean, I don't think that's a major change, right? I mean, this is primary, this is, and if they do want fifty feet, they can come ask for a variance, I mean, they're, they're gonna have the deep pockets, right?
I think if they want fifty feet, they're gonna go to the state.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't think, I don't think fifty feet's gonna chase them to the state, personally, that's my opinion.
I think the more workable we leave it, uh, then we can work with them, you know, they come in and we can say, we, in this situation, we'd like a hundred-foot setback, and then they can work with us in that.
Well, and then, you can put it in very specific locations where people are actually impacted, instead of the entire...
I, I think we should take it back to...
Oh, but yes, you can, uh... Oh, but yes, you can, uh, um, let me see where, yeah, we would just change section, uh, C. So in thirty dash eight oh nine, solar energy facilities. Um, item C three, that's the primary setbacks. It says fifty feet to any other property line. We would just cross that out and under the hundred feet, we would say one hundred feet from all property lines.
Um, I like that, I don't know, Leah, what do you think?
Mm-hmm, I agree with you.
Of course. Tom?
I'm good with that.
You know, Doug, you?
I'd, I'd like to leave it at fifty feet, but.
Let's, I think, alright, so let's just put that down as a potential change and we could talk on that one. I know we flipped from like, like a egg in a pan on this one.
Alright, I have it, uh, here as proposed change. Alright, the next one, um, that he has.
Height again, right?
Uh, on page seventeen, height, I would suggest, again, yeah, this is the twenty-five to sixteen.
Is this primary?
Um, seventh, page seventeen.
I would assume, I think it is.
Yeah, this is for primary.
Hmm. I guess in this one, third.
Again, this would be another, so twenty-five is what the state allows. So this would be another reason that they might not come to you.
Yeah, I think we can leave that one.
I've never seen a commercial solar field that's even ten feet.
Yeah, not, not in a, well, they're, they, they are ten feet at maximum tilt probably, but, um, yeah, it's definitely, they're not, they're not twenty-five feet tall yet. Um, but again, I don't know in the fut, yeah, what will change in the future. And just if you have a field, a three hundred acre field of twenty-five foot tall solar panels, is it really that much different than a three hundred acre field of sixteen-foot solar panels?
Well, Bill, see the sunrise a little bit earlier.
Well, I'm guessing you guys are going to require screening around the, around the edges of these anyways, so, um, you're going to have trees that would screen views from surrounding.
Yeah, no, I.
Properties, so again, that would be, um, up to you, but I'll, I'll take Doug's stance on this is if you make it more n- not workable, there's less likely chance that a developer is going to come to you. Developer already is going to be skeptical to come to you, because they're going to know that you have discretion. And discretion is scary for a developer, because at any point you can just say, we're not going to allow this. And then they're going to have to go to the state. So it's just taken them three months to get you to say, no, we don't want this. And then they have to go through their year process at the state.
Yeah, who knows how, how long the state policy is gonna last too.
Yeah.
A lot of this is removing parts, right?
Yeah. So it, but again, it's up to you if you want it sixteen or twenty-five.
I, I'm not, um, I don't have any feeling one way or the other. Doug, you probably don't.
I find leaving it at twenty-fives.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, so let's just, let's leave that one as it is.
I don't think it'll ever be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number five, um, had to do with adding some wording about the National Electric Code into the fencing. I made that change, because I wasn't sure if that was a legally defensible comment. It seemed odd to me, I will say, because we don't, we usually don't put in all the other codes that have to be met for things, but I did add it in already. So it would be like if, if I wrote after every thing that I wrote in the code has to meet state building code or has to meet ADA compliant regulations. I mean, these are just things that have to be met regardless of if I say it or not. So, but I did put it in, um, so it's already in the code. Um, he wanted us to put in that the fencing, uh, would comply with the latest version of the National Electric Code. And I'm guessing that's if they use an electrified fence, because otherwise I don't know what you would have electric on a fence, so.
Scott, I, I put a note in here for my own personal, where did, um, which section did we have the height of the fencing discussed?
Um, the fencing requirements, uh, have to meet the code requirements for fencing. So in, uh, thirty-eight oh three of our code, which is not in the section that's in front of you tonight. It's just, it's just telling you that you have to meet fen, the same fencing requirements that are required for everywhere else in the township.
Yeah, did we put in, um, so for instance, for fencing and maybe for visual, there's, I, what I was curious about is if we wanted to have something that, um, so the fencing needed to match the appropriate relationship to the solar farm. Cause I, what, what, um, kind of drove that was when I drove down here and I looked at, um, steel's heating and cooling. They got the dumpster, right, sitting there by the freeway, but then the fence only goes halfway up the dumpster. You know, and it's, visually, it's, it looks like we missed the boat on that one, right, from a fencing height.
So currently it says the fencing has to require section thirty, as thirty-eight oh three, except it may be on the perimeter of the entire project and it may be up to seven feet in height. Um, to restrict unauthorized access, because currently your code only allows six foot in height, so it allows an additional foot. And then, uh, the proposed fencing may encroach twenty feet into the required setback of the short, uh, the solar, uh, facilities. So if the solar facility had a fifty-foot set or a hundred-foot setback,
Yeah.
Uh, it could encroach twenty feet into that setback and then be put up, so, um, that it could be a little bit further away, um, if they wanted it.
Would it be wise just maybe to change it from a height thing to say that from visual, um, and security, um, considering, so if you've, so you got a fence and it's on a big hill, someone could just kind of jump right over it, right? Where they may need a twelve-foot fence versus a seven-foot because of the slope of the land, right?
Yeah, I would let them ask for a variance if that is actually the case. Otherwise, you're creating an ordinance that is very hard to.
Know what I'm, right, why I was just, take, take.
People are just going to.
No, I'd take the seven feet out, but say, you know, that needs to meet basic security requirements as determined by, uh, some sort of.
As determined by the planning commission?
No, maybe by the, um, security consultant or maybe the local police department.
Yeah, I would leave it as seven feet in height and have them ask for a variance. And the reason being, because you could say that forever. I know, I, I know you're, you're saying that, but a developer, you know, let's say a developer of a housing project comes in and says, I want to put up a thirty-five foot tall fence, because I don't want criminals jumping over the fence into you. And they get a security consultant to say that that's necessary. I mean, there, I mean, if you make a ordinance that just allows anything, if you make an ordinance that has a height restriction and then they have to ask for a variance for that height restriction, if there is a need for the variance based on the topography of the lot, the location, the size, those types of things. And, and the only reason being is if it's flexible, developers are going to tell you whatever they want to get what they want. And you don't want just very, very big, large walls being put up, uh, wherever they want to put them.
I just think, uh, seven feet's too short.
My spec.
Primary's right.
Yeah. Fences don't make good neighbors, but, um, if you want to put twenty-foot tall fences, that would be fine with me.
My, my speculation is that the attorney put in the, uh, complying with the National Electric Code for fences, it might have something to do with, uh, protection from high voltage, uh, energy producing devices. Uh, for instance, if they put in a transfer station or a, you know, any kind of high voltage device, there has to be a certain kind of fencing around it would be, I think, part of that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with how that works, but for me, seven feet seems short.
Oh, ten feet?
Fifty. I don't know.
Somewhere between eight, ten. We're scared to look at.
My, my concern is you could build a higher fence, then you have to have higher screening to hide the fence. That's going to be uglier than the screening.
Hmm.
So it would be, uh, you know, I, I kind of side with Scott with, let it be a variance if they need a higher fence. They probably have razor wire over it and stuff like that, too.
I, I, I mean, I don't think that we're having problems with fences. I've driven by, uh, so these are, this one's for solar. So I've driven by these solar facilities, so they don't have super high fences around them. I'm guessing they're electric fences maybe, but I don't even think that's the case. I don't know who's trying to break into these.
If I go back to the steel heating and cooling example though, right? I mean, that's visually ugly down there. They got a dumpster and the fence isn't tall enough, right? So, so there's a screening part of it and then there's also, um, the functionality of it, right? That's where.
Take a. I, I would suggest not putting your dumpsters on the edge of the fence then, put them near the building.
I mean.
And build a, and build a.
I don't think that fence.
Enclosure around.
Seven feet tall, right? I don't, this is short.
Probably isn't, because I believe your code only allows six-foot tall fences currently. So, but again, when you go through, uh, the special use permit process or the site plan review process, you should look at where their dumpsters are going to be located and have a dumpster enclosure built around the dumpsters. It'd be a very.
Well, we did that still, it's just, we missed the height of the fence. You know, that was, I mean, that's where I'm just trying.
I think that's different, though. Uh, uh, no, take a three hundred acre field that's got all solar panels on it. Uh, and you put a fence at eighty feet off the right of way, because you can fringe in there. I don't think your three foot more fence is going to make any difference at all. You're still gonna.
Probably doesn't. So if you want to put ten feet.
If he wants to climb over it, they're gonna climb over it, whether it's seven or ten. So I, I think, you know, the fence is something that's.
Seven to ten feet?
No, w- well, it's up to, so we're not mandating that they have a fence around them. It's whatever they want, right? So if you want, we could just change it from seven feet to ten feet.
Seven.
Which ordinance is this?
It would probably be on every single one of the primaries, so you would change it. But it's, the one that I'm looking at right now is section thirty-eight oh nine, which is the solar energy facilities, C six. So you'd have to change it under C six. The next place that you would change it would be under thirty-eight-ten, which is the wind energy facilities.
Mike, this, or down here on Francisco Road. I don't know if a, that, a ten-foot fence around that is going to make a difference. You know, I really don't, when you put that many out there, it's gonna be hard to.
Yeah.
Did anybody drive through North Calhoun County lately?
Well, the, the fences usually aren't for screening. The fences are for security purposes, yeah. And I don't, the one on Francisco Road definitely doesn't have a ten-foot tall fence, it's just a regular.
I don't know, even if you put ten.
Shane Lake.
I don't know with how the ground rolls.
I'm just saying it's up to, it didn't, didn't say you necessarily have to put it.
Yep, and then the next, so I'm going to go again back through it. So next would be thirty-eight-ten, wind energy facilities. Uh, D, which is primary wind energy facilities, and the fence section is.
We're not requiring the fence, we're just, if you want to put a fence up, you can't go more than seven feet right now.
Right.
I'm saying you can go up to ten feet if you want it.
So Mike's thing is he wants to change the seven to ten. Um, but I don't know, maybe you should take a straw poll to see if everybody's on board before I figure out where we'd have to change the seven to ten on, in the code.
That's just giving them the option to go to ten feet if they want to.
Right. So it's, we're, we're not gaining anything either way.
That just gives, enhances the security of the site. I mean, what's the height of the fence here around Chrysler?
I don't know.
Well, over seven feet, right, and it's barbed wire.
Yeah, that's probably a ten-foot fence around Chrysler.
Yeah.
Not our job to secure the place. Well, and it sounds like we're not, we're not doing that. We're just saying, well, if you want it, you can go to ten feet, but you're, it's up to you. I don't think visually it's going to make that big of an impact either way. That's what I was saying, you're still going to see the solar field, but it's a great, great big one on the road. Unless it's down in a valley.
Anyways, that, that's the note I put out there. We don't have to do it, I'm just throwing it out there as an option, so.
So it would be an easy enough change, because you would just change it from seven to ten feet on all of the sections. It would be the primary solar, primary wind and primary, um, storage, uh, energy storage facilities. Change the fencing height from seven to ten feet.
What does the state allow if they went to the state?
I'm not sure.
We're, we're trying to make sure that they don't want to go to the state, they've got the.
Well, this would be something that you'd be giving them more, if the state.
There's more.
Yeah, it's more than what you currently allow, so you would be, you would be allowing them even more. So I wouldn't worry about.
Does the state allow them even more?
I don't think Scott does.
I don't know, um, but they don't allow them less, so, I mean, w- we're making our ordinance more accessible by going to ten feet.
That's why I'm leaning toward, I'm okay with ten, seven to ten feet. I mean, it's just giving them a little more flexibility to make it more appealing.
Is that the consensus for everybody and we can move to the next one?
I'm fine with it.
Right, sorry about that.
Fencing requirements under primary solar wind and energy storage from seven to ten feet. Alright, next. On page seventeen, it goes for, oh, this was just a, um, formatting error and I made that change. Um, on page eighteen, decommissioning, I would suggest that we take out
Notice so.
That salvage, um, value, and I did, uh, make that change also. Um, page nineteen, uh, paragraph N, since this is a workable ordinance, I would suggest that we only require compliance with required, adopted, requirements adopted by the MSPC that are more stringent. Um, it just said all of the requirements. So, um, hi- his suggestion was just make it so it says more stringent requirements. Um, and I agreed and made that change also. Uh, page twenty, provision eight, I'm not sure if the language is correct where it says primary battery energy storage facility, I think it should say solar. Yes, it should have said solar, and I made that change. Page twenty, uh, uh, nine, E needs to be taken out of light. Like, oh, it said lightninging.
Lightninging.
Agreed with this and made this change, the E had to come out. Um, we should add a provision, um, to these application requirements for public safety requirements like, and I actually took his wording and added those in. You can see those in each of the, um, the sol, the primary solar, the primary wind and the primary battery storage facilities. I made the public safety, um, requirement change. And I also made the public safety study change that he suggested under number eleven. On page twenty-four, regarding the height, you might consider changing the height to. On page twenty-four, regarding the height, you might consider changing the height to three hundred feet. Um, currently you have it, I think, at two seventy-five. Um, he is suggesting it because uh there is a court case out there that upheld the three hundred feet. Um, so again, you guys have two seventy-five in there. He's suggesting three hundred. I think we talked about this last time. You could go with three hundred, or you could stay with three seventy-five. Again, the three hundred would be more likely that they would come to you if it was all, if because it would make it more workable, but I'm guessing that three hundred or two seventy-five, they're not going to come to you either way. Um, but with the three hundred and the case law that he's stating was in two thousand four. In two thousand four, the average tower height um was three hundred feet. The average tower height that's going in today is six hundred and seventy-five feet. So I doubt that this court case would still hold up, but that's the court case that your attorney is claiming to follow, so you might want to just change the two seventy-five to three hundred feet to comply with that court case.
Hmm.
And that, that would again only be um for things that can't go to the state, so um with the uh with the wind, that's a a hundred megawatt systems and larger and larger, so you would be caught, let's say somebody wanted to put in a commercial system or some that they were selling that was under a hundred megawatts, it would have to comply with your two seventy-five where he's saying that three hundred would be more legally defensible maybe than two seventy-five.
Hmm.
So that, that's up to you guys, if you want to go that route or not.
Well, if you think it's more defendable, right, that's probably important consideration, right?
We had a lot of conversation about this.
I know, dude.
Talking about the different heights and.
Last before we had this report, you're right, and it's, and it's already been you know, court case, I agree with Scott, it's old and most of them are already twice the size. Between two seventy-five and three hundred, it's probably we're going to get sued anyways, right?
If anybody wants to make a, a wind system that's less than a hundred megawatts in, which they probably aren't anymore making uh a primary commercial wind systems that are under a hundred megawatts. So if they're over a hundred megawatts, they're not, they can't sue you because they have an alternative route. They can go to the state. So it's, it's up to you if you want the three hundred to go with three. Like you said, I think if you have somebody, you're going to get sued either way, but what's the difference between twenty-five feet if you're?
I think you just leave it as is for now. I'll be good. I don't, I don't.
Is that everybody?
Change?
I didn't change it yet because it was one of those.
I guess it's a big change for you.
No, I would just write in here, it's under, under section three ten D, which is primary wind energy systems. Uh, number three is the height. It says primary wind energy systems shall not exceed a total height of two seventy-five. That would just be changed to three hundred, so it's a very easy change.
And that's the, on the advice of our legal advisor. I think our motivation was we didn't want to encourage what we see up in Claire and up in that area with the five hundred waters all over the place.
And what we're saying, whether it's two seventy-five or three hundred, if they come in and want to do it, they're going to go to the state anyway, so.
But your legal is suggesting it, so maybe it would be okay. I, I don't know what the difference between twenty-five feet is with a two seventy-five, but I, I also, I also probably don't think you're ever going to see one of these because it's in that, it's in that area where nobody wants to build a three hundred foot tall one anymore. And nobody wants to build a system that is under a hundred megawatts. That is a commercial system.
It's not economical.
So, yeah. So it's, like, either, I mean, I'm willing to change it to three hundred feet. I'm willing to keep it two seventy-five. It's up to you five to make the determination on.
I'm indifferent, Doug.
I'm, I'm indifferent whichever way, if it's.
I could, I could look at the three hundred or the two seventy.
And the legal guys say yes, yes.
All right, let's go three hundred.
All right.
All right.
Uh, let me write this down, three eight ten. C.
It doesn't change what our concerns were last time.
No.
Not really.
D. Three. Height. Changed of primary wind energy facilities. From two seventy-five to three hundred. All right. All right, next, um, on his.
Section fourteen?
Uh, thirteen, I made this change. On page twenty-nine, I would add another letter to public safety and, oh, this is the same comment as before. I made that change to all three of the systems, so the public, uh, the public safety uh comments. Number fourteen, we may want to consider adding provisions similar to PA two thirty-three status saying the wind energy facility is equipped with functional light mitigation technology to allow proper
Conspicuity?
Conspicuity of wind turbines at night during the construction.
Construction. It may be lighted with temporary light until the permanent lighting configuration.
I added it, but it is very confusing.
I think it's just saying it needs, it should be lit up while it's under construction for FAA you know, for airplanes visibility, and then when it's uh completed, then it should have the minimum lighting requirement.
Yeah, isn't that an FAA requirement?
Yeah, this is, so he's just taking the wording directly from PA two thirty-three. And he says, just put it in your code. So I put it in there under, um, it's on page thirty I. Um, so I think we should just leave it in there because your attorney was suggesting to.
With, with radio towers, you, you don't determine lighting from the FCC. You wait until you get approval from FAA and they tell you what the lighting should be, and I would assume those same rules would apply.
Yeah, it says a description of the light mitigation technology submitted to the FAA as part of the regulation, so, yeah.
To keep planes from running into them while they're building it.
Yeah. Yep, is, is everybody okay with leaving that in or?
Yeah.
Put that in. All right, on page thirty, battery storage primary in C two, the township might want to consider increasing the setback to neighboring structures. I have some ordinance that are five hundred feet. Again, this is just hi- his comment, um, we had it at three hundred feet. Again.
It'd be a lithium fire, as they get lit, they burn, right? So.
Yeah, three hundred feet is what this uh state is mandating, so.
The state's mandating?
Under the PA two thirty-three, so I mean, it's just, again, just his opinion to increase it to five hundred feet uh to give you more. It's less, it's a less workable ordinance at that point. Um, more like, again, again, these are the ones that I see coming to you more because they're a lot smaller facilities, um, and you want them to come here so that you can have discretion on them and you can make them plant landscaping. Um, because under the state regulations, they don't have any requirements for that.
It's currently three hundred feet is what we have it at, yeah. So, yeah, five hundred is too restrictive, I think, so. And if, if, because they have to go through a special use permit, um, if it's in a situation where we think five hundred feet is more appropriate for fire safety, then we can stipulate it at that time. But we don't want them just running to the state and putting it in and we have no control over it.
Now, like if you did a wind study that it was in a valley that blew towards a house, you know, you could always increase the setback.
Are we talking about wind or bad, oh, this is bad?
Oh, yeah, no, this is battery storage, but I'm talking if, because I'm guessing that the state mandated three hundred feet because they know the fire safety on these. So if you're, when you're doing your special use permit requirements, you know, and the impacts on the neighboring structures, you would want some to link it to something if you're calling, you're saying the fire might you need a longer distance for the fire. Um, also, maybe it could be a longer distance because of you want them to put some sort of noise cancelling equipment in there if they can't meet the noise requirements. Um, because of the way the sh- shape or size, but you're going to require a noise study regardless, so. So that, sure that they meet the noise requirements and they, but again, yes, uh, you will go through a discretionary hearing process. But again, link it to some reality when you're looking at it, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, I don't see any need to change it. Since we do have the option before they actually build it.
Yeah, I just would, I cautioned about that. He's seen other group people go through this and he's written other ordinances, reviewed them and other communities have said, hey, three hundred is not enough, right? And so are, are they smarter than us? Do they know something we don't? That, that they took it to five hundred? And that's, that's where I'm, that's how I'm looking at it, right? Is there some risk out there we haven't considered that, you know, potentially is out there?
What I've heard is that the townships that have gone to five hundred feet don't want battery storage. That's why they put it so high. So, um, and then that's what, how P, PA two thirty-three came into, to uh into being because the townships were being too restrictive and uh the landowners who wanted to put this stuff in here uh weren't allowed to. So, you know, again, we want to be workable, so we can always increase it if, under special use if it seems unreasonably dangerous, so.
I don't know, I'm not an expert in this area, so I'm just. I don't know, what do you think, Leo?
I don't know, I'd go to the five hundred if that's what he recommends. I like that.
Rest your thought.
A lot of this discussion has been to try to be friendlier to the smaller landowners that are trying to find alternative uses for their property and make it more workable. Uh, and keep them from going to the state just to, they can come in, so I'm think this is another one of those. It's, we can make it go to five hundred feet if we see there's going to be a problem. Uh, but for just as a general ordinance guidelines, to get them in and talking to us and the property owners, we don't want to scare them away when we get go.
I'm not so certain about that either. How long, how long you're talking?
I'm good with the three hundred.
Are you? Okay. Doug, you're good with the three hundred?
Yeah, I think it's important because we want to keep it workable. Otherwise, they're going to go to the state and it's going to be three hundred feet whether we want it or not.
All right, no, it's fine, it's.
Show some workability.
No, no, that's fine. We just want to hash it out and make sure everybody's on the same page, right? I mean, I, I don't, I don't have any gut feel one way or the other. It's just looking at what he said and what he's talked with other people.
We'll see the site plan to review when somebody does want to do this, right?
Well, and then you can use very specific locations. You can require, like, if there is an actual impact on a neighboring structure, then you could actually require a larger setback if you want it, if you believe that that would mitigate the impact on the neighboring structure.
Yeah, but then you still got to fight through that, that process too, so it's not it's not a slam dunk, so.
I get it, yeah.
All right, let's move on.
So we'll leave that one at three hundred feet because it looked like there were three, so I won't put that as one of our proposed changes. Um, let's see, the next one. Next one, under two B, the township may want to consider a setback of a hundred feet to the road right of way or property line. You currently have seventy-five feet. Um, the state only requires fifty feet. Um, so again, he's request, he's suggesting a larger setback than both what we're proposing, which is seventy-five feet and what the state requires under PA two thirty-three.
This is for um.
Battery storage.
Battery storage.
Again, it has to be three hundred feet from a neighboring structure, but five hu- or seventy-five feet is what you currently require, legally require as a setback from a property line.
I would tend to change it to fifty feet, but I think seventy-five feet is a, is a compromise and less intimidating than a hundred feet.
Hmm. I'm not sure what to think of this one. Is Doug playing up? I'm in the middle of the road right now, right? So it's seventy-five, so. Tom, your thoughts?
I, I'm good with seventy-five.
Leo?
Yeah, seventy-five.
All right, all right, we'll leave that one at seventy-five. Uh, next one, under the height on page thirty, I would suggest a height of twenty feet. Additionally, it should not include wind, yeah, so I took out the wind oriented uh to maximum tilt, but I didn't change it to twenty feet. We currently have twenty-five feet. Um, I left it because we had discussed it and we had recommended twenty-five feet in the past, so. He's suggesting a twenty foot, uh, the state, the PA two thirty-three allows for twenty-five feet. Again, the ones that I've seen built haven't been twenty or twenty-five feet. They're, they look like a whole bunch of those semi-trailer things parked around a, a lot, so.
Was this solar panels or are we talking about batteries still?
We're talking about batteries still.
What does tilt have to do with batteries?
It didn't, I took that out.
Okay.
It was just leftover from
Yeah.
the height wording on something else, so. I did take out the wind oriented to maximum tilt, but I didn't change the height. So currently you have in the ordinance that is in front of you tonight, height under uh thirty-eight eleven, battery energy storage facilities, C, primary energy facilities. Three, height shall have a maximum height of twenty-five feet measured from the ground to the top of the facility. You want to talk about this the same way that you've talked about the other ones?
Yeah. Keeps it workable.
You want to take a little poll to see where everybody's at, Mike?
Um, this is point seventeen, right?
Uh, yeah, we're on point seventeen, so it's proposing a change to section thirty eight eleven, battery energy storage facilities, C, three, on page thirty-one, wow.
And the state is at, what is that?
The state is at twenty-five feet.
We're five feet less than that?
No, you're currently at twenty-five feet. He is suggesting twenty foot setback and, or a twenty foot height instead of a twenty-five foot height. It would, like you have stated in the other regulations, it would make the ordinance less workable. Um, they might choose to go to the state because of that. But again, it's up to you guys, twenty or twenty-five feet.
I'm just trying to understand this, so basically they're talking about stacking.
I think you currently do not allow. I think you currently do not allow stacking under, um, C4 stacking. Stacking of battery storage system components is prohibited, and that's because of fire safety.
Is there battery storage systems that could be that tall? I mean, how, how do they get them there?
I've never seen, um, but th- this is a new technology also. So the ones that are currently being made, I, like I said, look like the backs, uh, they're, they're like.
Storage containers.
Storage containers, yeah.
Which come in on a semi, which can't be more than 14 feet tall, sitting on the wheels.
Right.
Pull that off there, set it on a concrete pound.
But at any time, you know, the technology may change and they may build these differently. So the difference would be a 25-foot or a 20-foot tall building. The reason I would s- say you use 25 feet is because that's what you allow accessory buildings to be.
And that's what the state allows.
Well, and that's what the state allows. So it makes it a more of a workable ordinance, more likely if a five-acre battery storage facility did, does come into your community, then they'll come to you instead of go to the state. And that's, that's the goal of making these workable to see it, to make them come to you so that we can get them. One, you'll want them to paint these. The ones that I've seen have all been that cream color, which I'm like, why don't they just paint them like brown or something so you don't have to see them? And, and then landscaping, you know, because.
Five acres of battery storage? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, yep.
What are we talking lithium and?
Yeah, could be.
Right. That sounds like a completely different topic than windmills and solar panels.
Well, wi- solar panels are 300-plus acres.
Understand. I'm, I'm just talking about what's sitting there. Bringing in truckloads of batteries, uh, letting them build them up 25 feet high on, going up five acres. That's, that's a big explosion.
I, I don't know a lot about them either, but that, that sounds.
Everything else we've been talking about, I'm great.
They just had a fire on some electric vehicles out at, uh.
Chrysler?
Chrysler.
Did it help?
That's great.
I don't know how it started, but I think 12 cars.
Oh, did you see the fire?
Yeah, I saw it.
Did you?
Yeah.
Just black.
Black smoke, yeah. It was in the parking, one of their parking lots.
Let's take it to 20. I'll see a fire out here.
Yeah, it's going to make a big difference.
But mess regardless of your fire.
Well, again, again, it, they can go to the state. Um, so if the goal is to have them go to the state. So these ones, so the way the state regulation works is if the battery storage, it's like 100 megawatts plus there's another trigger on, on these battery storage ones. Um, if they're over that, they can go to the state if they don't want to follow our regulations. Um, if they're under that, so the 100-megawatt systems are five to 10-acre system. That's what you, that's what they see going in. I don't think the state of Michigan has a battery storage facility yet.
So, yeah, my thought is we want them to come to us. A difference of five feet, it's not going to make a big difference. Um.
Not sure I want to see them come to us. I think.
Well, no, we want them to, we want them to, to come to us rather than go to the state. So we want to be able to work with, if it does come to this area, we want them to come to us first. So I think, uh, leaving it at 25 feet is, at least keeps it workable. We start making it, again, it's the same thing, making it more restrictive. They're going to, if they want to put in 25 feet, they're going to go to the state. But looks like right now, like, uh, Chris was saying, they're going to be 14 feet unless they put them on stands or something.
What is a battery storage? I mean, when we've been talking about this, I've been relating that to, okay, they've got some battery storage in association with a solar, a bunch of solar arrays to act as kind of a buffer as it's being sent into the grid. Same thing with, uh, wind turbines.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what I just heard is it could be an entire field full of batteries for what? Where's the, where's the power coming from and?
Well, we don't know that, but the idea is that rural areas would be supporting the urban areas.
It's to secure the grid.
It's like, we're, we're the UPS for Ann Arbor. I'm not sure I like that.
Well, you're going to have to have something. Now, if they're planning on, when did our governor say she wanted all solar and wind power? So we're going to have to have battery backup if you want to turn light on at night to see.
Right.
So you're going to have to get it from someplace. If the wind's not blowing, if the sun's not out, if you don't have some sort of backup, you're going to be in the dark.
That's right. That's when consumers are going to fire up their old coal plants again.
I don't think they shut that one down, didn't?
No.
Well, if we don't have any of these storage facilities yet in the state of Michigan, how are we doing that now?
We're not. Well, they're pumping water up hydroelectric and that, but Tom's point is with this directive that the states don't, the governor and ticker is throwing at us is that they want to be all green energy. You got to start somewhere.
Yeah, I get that.
The question is, long-term, does, do those initiatives really hold up?
Do we want to be the pioneers in battery storage and find out it was a mistake?
Well, there's two ways to look at it. One is the state can come in and fortify it, or you.
Yeah. Chris, this isn't.
Word, it's the workout.
Now, this isn't a question of whether we're going to be the guinea pigs or not, it's.
If that's the direction we're going to, but it's not, it sounds like this AI is going to need all the power we can create to run it. So we got to figure out where you're going to get this power at for the rest of us people. We're going to have to go to nuclear or something here. Something needs to start
Yeah.
going right now because.
Right. Eli Metta's trying to bring back Three Mile Island for its data sites.
I mean, we could say no battery storage in Silicon Township. We could have, you know, mortuary on that, but then they would just go to the state and say, you know, we're going to put one here anyway.
We wouldn't say no battery storage, but we can make it very.
In an extreme case, yeah, we could say you have to have a two-mile setback or something, but.
They still just say they really want.
Exactly.
Right. So we need, we want to, we need to have a workable ordinance, so let's keep it workable. Let's give them 25 feet. Not that they're going to say, oh, woo-hoo, we're going to put in a 25-foot, five-acre battery, you know, um.
Well, it's funny to think about it, just to, just suppression you.
To be, to be the other side of your argument though, Doug, I'm guessing that they're not looking to make them 25 feet either. Because I, the ones that I see on, in all the pictures, they're just these low little
Right.
12-foot tall structures that they throw all over the lot because they're just batteries that, that are all chained together.
Yeah, they end up looking like a freight yard.
Yeah.
Right.
So we want to be able to control that freight yard is what Doug is saying is we want to be able to screen that. We want to be able to say that it should be located in certain areas and it should be hidden from views from off-site.
Yeah, I, I understand about keeping this workable.
But 20, 20.
You know, the comments I've already made have been, you know, Ford, that could make it friendly. But we just entered into an area here that we don't know anything about. Uh, we don't know where it's going to go. And we're trying to make a decision tonight as to whether it can be 25 feet tall or not. But.
No, I think the decision is whether you want to make it workable or less workable. That's really what it comes down to. So I think we, my opinion is we want to keep it as workable as possible.
Yeah, I agree with Doug on that point. I'm, we're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't, so. We're trying to thread a needle here, right?
Again, the thing that it would impact is the, let's say you had a commercial system that was under 100 megawatts that can't go to the state. You know, then you're allowing it to be 25 feet. I don't, again, think that anybody's going to build a battery storage facility that's under 100 megawatts of storage, but they could. And it would be a commercial one, meaning that they're shipping that off-site energy. So I, I doubt it's economically feasible to build smaller systems because you, you only see larger and larger and larger systems going, and you don't see them shrinking the size of the systems. But again, 20 or 25 feet probably doesn't make much of a difference either, right? So it's up to you.
Difference between me and Tom, right? I say we leave it as it is for now.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's, you're going to have one of those big facilities and they catch on fire, those extra five feet aren't going to. It's Tom's point was. You're going to have that anyways, right?
Mm-hmm.
That part of it, I, you know, I.
Plus, you're going to have all of them somehow. These, they're not going to build a back, they got to be something on a semi or a low boy or something be handled with a crane or something to do with these, because I can't, they're not going to produce small batteries.
Right.
They're going to have to make bigger batteries eventually.
Yeah.
It sounds like what they're going to do is do what they do in these major, uh, hyperscale data centers now. Um, and I've been through a few of those and there are battery rooms that are as big as Amazon warehouses.
Yeah.
Um, and they are very dangerous. Uh.
Halon and F9?
All of that stuff.
Yeah.
They're, they're big, they're big, huge, concrete, uh, typically preformed buildings that they put up and they can be 25, 30 feet tall, 40 feet tall, depending on how big they are. Uh, they don't want them noticeable because of the nature of them. They're typically driving tens of thousands of data servers, uh, that support the AI that you mentioned. Um.
Yeah, you can see them on heat grids from.
Yeah.
Space.
Michigan's building one, it's filled, so.
The question at hand here is do we want it 20 or 25 feet? That's, I think that's.
I think it's becoming.
It doesn't matter. The, the, the beer question is opening the door to have something like that, that we know nothing about being built in our backyard at the moment without doing a little more research.
You're not really opening the door because the door is open.
Door is already open.
If somebody wants to go to the state and do it, they, they're just going to go to the state and build whatever they want. The state's just going to stamp it with the government we have now.
Right. So.
We're not stopping it by making it 25 feet, but I think it deserves a little bit more attention.
But we have more.
Understanding what it is that could happen with that.
Yep.
We're okay with solar panels and wind turbines.
We have to create a battery energy storage facility regulations. That's what we've been going through the last two and a half years, actually three years of plant, I mean, this, uh, this was always in there, this battery storage facility section, so.
I think, I'll, I'll just, I'm, I'm okay leaving it this because I think it's a bit of a mute point. I mean, it's, the five feet's not going to swing in one way or the other.
It's similar to all the rest of the items. If they really want to do it, they'll just go to the state. Um, regardless, because otherwise we'll have, uh, special use permit, uh, process where we'll have discretion over, um, impacts.
Doug, you fine leaving this?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Liam?
Fine.
Chris? I'd say I'm, I'm fine leaving it.
This definitely, I, I need to do a little bit more research on it to understand what could happen.
Yep.
Could be coming in that sense. I mean, to support a solar field is one thing, but.
Might want to move to the UP, get away from it.
But you know, it's, it's the same as hazardous waste dumps, you know, the, people don't want them in their backyard and if we are, if, if, if it's something that, I mean, there's a lot of people that are concerned about solar fields right now because of the supposed hazardous chemicals in the panels themselves that could leach out of them.
Yeah.
And I don't give that a lot of concern because I'm, I think they're contained better than that, but I, tons and tons of lithium batteries in steel containers take it to five acres. That's, that's a huge, huge, huge.
And that's why we need an ordinance that's workable.
Because if we don't have nothing in it, they're just going to go to the state and say, you're going to do.
I, I understand what you guys are saying. I, I get that, uh.
I mean, this is.
This is probably a little bit.
Dancing devil, any way you look at it, so.
Yeah.
Oh, you're, you're most definitely wrong. It's not a good situation having all that there. Yeah, but it's out of basically our hands to state. I'm not going to.
All right. So I think we've collectively.
All right.
Move on.
The next one on page 32, consider the same change on page 19 as we would for so. I made that change. I don't want to go back and see what that was. On the top of page 33, at the end of 19, it is not, ju- oh, this is, uh, where is this? End of 19. At the top of page 33, because all these cha- changes changed the page numbers. At the end, at the top of page 33, at the end of 19, it's not just 50 megawatts, but it needs to be 50 megawatts of energy discharge capability in less than 200 megawatts hours. I made the change.
That's an item 21.
Is it an item 21?
Uh, under 9.
Yes, it's an item 21 on page 34 now. So, uh, the change has been made as, uh, required by the attorney. So 20, add the application requirements for a primary uh, battery storage as this, oh, this is the public safety requirements, and I did add those in for both the public safety requirement and then the public safety study. Um, so those are those, those items. And then, uh, he's talking about the, uh, P5 zoning district. Um, he's assuming we don't have a P5 zoning district and that is correct. Uh, we don't have any, any land that is zoned P5. Um, I don't know what, where that would have been used if you would have had it. It would have been a piece, just a single piece of property maybe. Um, and then he says, uh, do we have any anti, uh, funneling regulations in the ordinance under chapter 28, Waterways, Division 2, you do have some frontage regulations. Um, you might want to consider putting more funneling regulations in place, but getting rid of the P5 doesn't help you with funneling regulations because it didn't. Ha- it, it was just a zoning district. It wasn't an anti-funneling regulation. So, uh, currently you do have regulations that require, you know, a certain, uh, amount of length of, uh, shore frontage for every boat, um, that is on a piece of property, but it does, oh, it is not the most restrictive funneling ordinance, anti-funneling ordinance that I've ever seen.
Can, um, all right, we'll, we'll talk about that.
So we can talk about that at the next, at our next joint meeting too, um, if, if we want to.
I'll be there for the last part of the agenda.
Add those in, yep. Um, and that, I think that is it for his comments. Yep.
So I have.
So the three, the three, so I want me to go through the, the three changes that, uh, we're proposing to exhibit one that's in front of you tonight were, um, under 3809, C36, um, which is the, uh, solar, primary solar energy facilities. You're going to change, um, oh, not E3s or C36, it's 3CB. You're going to change that to say 100 feet from any property line and you're going to get rid of item C. Um, so that basically makes for primary solar, you're going to have 100-foot setback on all sides. Where under the ordinance that was in front of you tonight, the draft ordinance, it was 100-foot on the right of way, but 50 feet on the other sides. So that was the first change. The second change, um, was under the fencing requirements for primary solar, primary wind and primary energy. You're going to change the maximum height from seven feet to 10 feet. And the third was, uh, under 3810, C3. Um, the height of a primary, uh, wind energy facility, you're going to change from 275 to 375. Those were the three changes.
You said 300?
300, yeah, 300. Sorry, my bad. So those were the, those are the proposed three changes and if you do make a recommendation, um, to the board at tonight's meeting, you'll want to memorialize those three changes. to the board at tonight's meeting, you wanna memorialize those three changes.
Yes, three C D, correct? For the hundred feet one?
Uh, three C B, yeah.
Three C B?
Yep, thirty-eight oh nine, C three B. And you would be removing three or C three C.
Wanna just work on a motion for this right now so we don't?
Yeah, that's why I wrote it down here.
Yep. Um, you wanna do a, uh, an exa- a motion? Send this to the board? I mean, I don't know, are we ready to do one? I guess I should ask that first question. Are you okay with we make a recommendation and send this to the board?
Yeah. Sure. So there is a, a example motion on page three of my staff report.
Yep, no, I've got it in front of me, so.
And then if you read that, um, and then say with the following conditions, I can read the three revisions.
I'm gonna make this separate from the other motions. So, because we got one for the P five district. Do you wanna do that one?
Alright, you're going to do this as one entire ordinance change. So you're not gonna do it as three different things.
I didn't know if we just wanted to create a promotion for it or not, but.
No.
I'd, I'd like to, um, I could find it now. The, um, what Pat brought up about restricting solar south of, to south of ninety-four.
Um, that's under, uh, thirty-eight oh nine.
Yeah. I'm marked.
It, it's actually under all of the, uh, all of the primary. So thirty-eight oh nine, thirty-eight, ten and thirty-eight eleven. And it will, under eight oh nine, you'll see it under uh, C two zoning districts, primary solar energy facilities located in the A G district shall only be located on parcel south of I ninety-four.
Right. So, um, I know it has to be linked to something, but why, why couldn't we just say it's allowed all over the township? Um, because.
We wanna preserve the rural nature of the township in accordance with the master plan. And we've talked about this multiple times at the last meeting, right?
North of ninety-four, the, there's nowhere to put primary solar except close to the city where there's, um.
I don't think there's anywhere to even do it, so.
So what, then why, you know?
Ah, it's just to, to keep it, um, in the agricultural.
But, but if it's in, close to the city, that's, we're gonna, commercial stuff is gonna be anyway. It would be less, less of an eyesore close to residences and it would be more energy efficient. Uh, if that were to come, become the case, but, um, it's just my, my thought is that, um, it's nobody's gonna wanna put a, a commercial solar in this area. A primary solar, most likely anyway, but.
Regulation, just, just to be clear, the regulation is for all three of them, primary wind, primary solar and primary battery storage, just to, so, um, you know. So if you want it, you could change it for just one, or you could change it for all of them, or you could change it for none of them. Um, under the, under what we had talked, the last ordinance, it was point five miles from the high voltage lines and that was removed for this. And under your discussion last time, it was because of more of the, you had more of the larger lots south of I ninety-four and you were using the solar as preserving the farmland because a farmer can choose to use that as solar for thirty years and then come back and farm.
Right.
That the power corridor one was leaving out the southwest corner of township.
Right, right, right.
Concerned and.
Right.
Like going to just south of ninety-four was everything we felt that could be.
Yeah.
Out for that.
Yep.
Because there wasn't really anything north except possibly the state forest areas or Kavanaugh Lake could be recaptured and turned into something like that, which.
No, that's not gonna happen.
There you go.
Battery storage facilities aren't gonna happen either if they're that dangerous, but I mean, just, you know, I, I.
I think there is a current executive order that can sell, that you can sell off federal lands. So the state could do that at any point too.
Alright.
Right.
Not very likely, but.
Um, that was the compromise. Just say, okay, everything except out to ninety-four because that seemed to be the most prime land and it included the southwest corner.
That's where the property is. Not a lot of property north.
Right, exactly, but.
There's not enough.
But the fact, that fact alone um, is self-evident. So if it's allowed everywhere in the township, it's still not really gonna happen in north of ninety-four anyway. But if there's a, you know, a special case like Pat's talking about, if they wanna put it something over by Westchester or something like that, that a solar facility that's close to those houses.
They can come in and ask for a variance.
That's something that's gonna be finished. They're gonna build another hundred and something homes in there.
Yeah, hopefully.
The only property is that Merkel property, most of the city and that's not even in Sylvan Township, that's Lima. I think that got put in conservatory too, so.
The C S B, the, the bank property over by Sibley?
There's enough property there to do what you want to do.
Doug, they, Doug, also to your point, though, they could go to the state too, so.
Yeah, if they wanted to.
Go above I ninety-four.
Or could they come in for a variance to us if we restricted it to?
I'm not sure if that would be a, a variance, or if that would be a use variance and we'd have to see, but.
So, yeah, so then if they go to the state, then they get to put in what they want.
But it would be over a three hundred acre.
Well, that's true. There's not, there's not three hundred acres up there.
Too valuable. Solar, yeah. Way too valuable down the road.
I think it was the state forests was the only part, area that we thought could have been at jeopardy. We, everything's out to ninety-four and left that out. The state, they wanna go to the state for that. It's gonna be a little, a lot more to, a lot more to it.
Hmm. Well, that's just my thought that, um, I think north of ninety-four kind of protects itself, so.
I just shouldn't leave the terminology in there. First, Leo.
No, I think we should leave it.
Yeah. Chris.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, I.
Leave it.
It's, I just can't see a developer trying to find profit over there enough of it to make it worthwhile.
Alright, I'll think. Any else you wanna talk about, Doug's?
Nope, um.
Okay, are we ready to work on a motion? Well, we've got an example motion here that Scott has prepared for us. I'll read it and then I'd, or just someone else. For the Roberts Rules of Order, is someone else supposed to read it?
I think you read it.
Me? Okay. Planning Commission motion to recommend, recommend approval to approve the proposed zoning text amendment, Z T A O two five, Z T A twenty-five dash zero zero one, to amend the zoning regulations, chapter thirty zoning by adding regulations regarding renewable energy facilities, removing the P five zoning district regulations and adding lighting regulations because as discussed at tonight's planning commission meeting and as presented in the planning commission staff report, the zoning amendments comply with the master plan and will preserve the health, safety and welfare of the community by allowing appropriate development of existing sites within the community. Associated with these changes, there will be updates to section thirty-eight, oh nine dash three C B, removing, changing the variance, changing the setback to a hundred feet. Then the other change from the staff report is the height of the primary wind mill from, or wind, wind turbine from two seventy-five to three hundred. And the other change that we would like to introduce is, is to allow height of fences up to ten feet tall.
Um, primary solar, primary wind.
I'm primary, uh, wind, solar.
And battery.
Battery storage facilities. Well, that's the motion.
Have those section numbers for Dodi to.
I'll, uh, well, you don't need the section numbers because you're recommending this. I'll make the changes before it goes to the township board. So the township board document that they have in front of them, the draft ordinance, will be as you recommended it. So.
For the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Also, I cut.
I read it, um.
So move.
Motion by Doug's, second by Chris. And we'll do a roll call. Doug?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mike, hi.
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 Yeah, hi. Location, the motion passes you in. We've been almost three years working on this.
That's, that's great hair, but.
You weren't here for a while.
I've seen it for three meetings.
Yeah. I mean, this stuff, this, this, this can be frustrating. This is probably one of the more frustrating we've had to work on because it's, you got, not a lot of control, right? At least for now. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of extension to the site plan review approvals for the tow yard at eighteen six five one, Old US twelve. Um, I believe Scott, your staff report talked about that.
Yep. So I can present this to you if you would like. Um, so this was approved in November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, and the, uh, site plans are only valid for six months. The applicant has provided a letter of what they've been doing over the last six months. They've had um, some problems, uh, getting their, uh, roadway approval. Um, to the entrance and exit, uh, onto the roadway. Um, they had to rework a little bit, so, um, they have got that approval now and they are looking to move forward, so, um, hopefully, hopefully, um, they'll be, I think that I did see that they have some equipment out there now. So, um, I'm guessing they'll be coming in to pull a permit soon, um, on that one. So that is on my, um, list of small changes from the joint meeting. We're gonna change those, we're gonna extend those, uh, approvals from six months to one year for both the planning commission site plans and the Z B A variances, because they're both at a six months, month period. And a lot of times, uh, people will get a, um, approval in like October because they submitted in February. And then they can't actually even start thinking about building until spring again. And then by that time, the economy has changed enough where they're like, well, I don't wanna buy, get my loans right now because everything is more expensive. So it, it creates us having to keep going back and doing these extensions instead of, and if our code really hasn't changed, um, there's not much we can do about a, a site plan approval because site plans, um, when we have our, when we have our master class on site plan review, you'll see that they're not a discretionary item like a special use permit. This was a special use permit. The special use permit isn't the thing that's expiring right now. Um, it's the site plan approval that's expiring. So, um, special use permits do have um, discretion. Um, but site plans, as long as they can meet all of our code regulations, they're a lot easier to go through. So um, I did put the plans in, um, the packet that's in front of you tonight. So attached to, um, the packet, so on page, the fourth page is the letter from Midwest, Midwestern, uh, consulting that explains why they needed, um, the extension. Um, they're asking for a twelve month extension and then I put, uh, the actual, uh, project plans, just so you guys can like remember what this project was if you don't remember. We don't have that many projects here, so this was, uh, the Kern's Tow Yard, but maybe for Chris, you weren't even here. We approved this one originally. So you can see what this project is, so.
Is this by chance the one that was being out completed, uh, closer to, uh, Montane and?
I don't know if it, if it was the same owner because I wasn't here during that and it had a different name. Yeah, over on Ivy and Pierce.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. This is, uh, Kern's. They have a, uh, tow yard in Manchester. So.
Are they the ones that built the, the new shop out at, uh, ninety-four?
What? Sure. No, different.
Different currents.
No, that's Kern's, isn't it?
It's Kern's, but they're no relation.
A lot of Kerns.
Okay, Scott, these plans that you.
Yeah.
Fared with us. Um, I tried to view one of them in PDF, blown up and I still couldn't read it because it was just poor resolution. So do you have better?
Of course. Uh, if you would have sent me an email at any time, I could have sent you the original plans. Um, so that, we have these all electronically.
I wasn't sure if this is what he sent us or this is.
No, I, he didn't send us anything. He just sent us that one page letter. I just wanted to refresh your memory on the approval. Um, this is not, we're, they're not proposing any changes to the proposed plan that, that, that was approved. They're just asking for an extension of the approval because they couldn't get their road, um, approvals.
I just wanna make sure that their outdoor lighting would comply with our soon to be adopted dark sky ordinance.
Does, so. It is all, uh, downward directed. It actually, if the gentleman was still here, he had talked to, he actually stood up and talked about how well the lighting, um, was planned. Most lights that you see currently are going to be directional lights because they're LEDs. So they don't actually give off light up anymore when they're on these poles, so. Now, does that mean it will be great to live next to? Probably not, but when you look at it from the aerial, it won't look like the defense place over there or whatever it's called now. That's your one area of town other than, uh, close to Chelsea that is lit up on the lighting maps.
Those lights that used to use the air raid lights, remember that? They'd buy them for car dealerships.
Oh, yeah, there's, uh, searchlights, yeah.
So the, the, the lights that offend me the most in Sylvan Township are right here at this one on the corner. And then in the mobile home park. Like, what were they thinking?
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't have any questions about extending.
And I did give you the section of the code that allows you to extend it, um, to, by a twelve month period.
They ask him for just twelve months is, yeah.
That's all our code would allow you to extend it for, so.
Could they ask for less?
They could if they didn't think they were, you were going to give them twelve months.
We could give them, we could give them six months, right?
You could.
Eleven months, fourteen days.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they've broken ground. I don't think it's, this is more of a formality than anything else, so. I'll make a motion to extend the site plan for S P A twenty-four dash zero, was there one at eighteen, one eight six five one, Old US twelve through June thirteenth, twenty twenty-sixth.
Second that.
All favors say aye? All fair say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Alright. Concerns comments of the planning commissioner, Doug, you want to talk about MTA training?
Yeah, sure. I've, I've had the pleasure of going to the in-person MTA training in Kalamazoo. Where they had a dinner, it was more of uh, of a uh, college swill, um, cafeteria food. But the, I, I found that the um, although you could ask direct questions in person, I found the online training modules more useful for me. Because I could um, rewind and listen to it again wherever I felt I didn't understand it. So um, there's, I'm inspired now to uh, go through our zoning ordinance and um, get a better understanding. And see how things are kind of set up and how they work. So really clarified for me the roles of planning and zoning and how they relate to the master plan too.
Doug, did you want to maybe like do it like? Maybe next time we have a meeting, we can talk about module one and everybody can go through and say what they learned. Or have written notes and say what they learned. Do you want to try to do it that way or?
Well.
To, so we can get, so everybody can get the good lessons out of it and that can reiterate what we learned, maybe?
Life's probably not a good time to do it.
Yeah, it, maybe in winter, when we have more time on our hands.
Well, no, it's just people on vacation.
Okay.
I've listened to the first two and I thought they were, the ones online are very good. They're given by Susan Kaufman. Um, who's a very good speaker. Um, and, and the lessons are very relatable in everyday planning life. Like um, what, what they're talking about is stuff that we do on a daily basis, so. It's interesting. I haven't listened to the third one yet, which is about the zoning board of appeals, so.
Has anyone else gone through those three modules of the introduction to planning and zoning yet?
I've, I've been lucky to get time to read these by.
So yeah, I would, I mean, especially Chris and anybody else who's new to planning and zoning. Or if you just want to refresh your understanding of it. But um, uh, if you have any trouble logging into the MTA website, let me know. But you should log in with your uh, whatever email you use with the township, you communicate with the township. If you forgot your password, you can just click on forgot password and they'll send you a link to reset your password and.
I got that working last time. Afterwards did that, I, I just. It's not a good time of year. But I will.
Yeah, I think the first, first module is an hour, almost an hour and a half. And then the next one's like a little less than an hour and the last one's like forty-five minutes, maybe. Um, so they get a little less, but you know, I'd like to also eventually move on to uh, other things like running a meeting and a little more specific things for planning and zoning, some hot topic issues as well, so.
Yeah, and I want to uh, do a class where, at one of our meetings on site plan review. So basically I'll bring an example site plan and then I'll have given you all of the things that I look at. Because you get, sometimes you get a report and it says, you know, meets all of these requirements. And you know, it's thirty-five pages. You don't actually look at all of that stuff. But I want you to see wha- what's all in our ordinance. And then I also want you to look at each discretionary standard for special use permit. To give you sort of an example of what you can ask for because of those stand, the way the standards are written. So I have given uh, this class for students. Um, one of my um, old workmates is a professor at UC Irvine. And he had me come in and give this site plan review class uh, multiple times. So I just emailed him and got him to send me the information that I used for that class. Um, so that I could use it for you guys too. It's, it's not that long, um, but it will help you with like the, when the tow yard comes in. And when these smaller projects come in, what exactly you should be looking for, what you can ask for. How you can link what you're asking for to different standards of review, um, and those types of things. So similar to the way I write my staff reports out, you guys can each do that with, with your knowledge, so.
Okay, that sounds great, Scott. Doug, so you did it online and you also went to Kalamazoo.
I didn't realize it was going to be the exact same thing. The, the online one is basically one of those in-person trainings. Dinner trainings uh, recorded. But the in-person one I went to had uh, two lawyers from uh, Thals. Thals office and um, one guy was pretty thorough, but he went over time. And the next guy talked so fast and dropped off his sentences, I couldn't understand half the stuff he was saying. And then he, he ran out of time and he said, he just went through the slides and just said, okay, yeah, there's this and this. Okay, we covered everything. Yeah.
And tell you the same thing twice.
Right.
They, they are, the modules online are really good. I listen to them when I walk, but if you're going to do that, I would suggest listen them to them when you're walking. Then listen to them again when you're sitting down, so you can write down notes for yourself. I listen to them multiple times, so I'm, I just, I'm a planning geek, so I sort of like to listen to that stuff. So I, I always am looking for new free um, online virtual stuff to listen to.
Can't remember if the online ones provide the slides with the presentations for you to download. I can't remember if they do, but I do have the slides. So if you uh, want a copy of those slides, I could scan them to you or something like that.
The book that you have also is, they talk about it multiple times in, in their presentation. But we do have a copy of the book here at the office. Doug has it. So it's actually on my desk right now because they had mentioned something and I wanted to look at.
Alright, I have one other comment. So thanks for that, Doug. Any else you want to add?
Uh, no, I just think, you know, it's something good that is available to us because our township paid for this membership. And uh, we should try to take full advantage of it.
No, I, I get it. I will, I look at the letters that go in back and forth every day of the chat boxes. Some of them are kind of interesting. Some are.
Yeah, they don't really apply, but.
Yeah, some of them are out there, some.
Yeah, some of them are out there. What to do with the cemetery, the, the people are all dead, right? One question I had though, Scott, you talked about earlier was the funneling ordinance. We need permission from the board to actually look at that.
Yeah, we should bring it to the board first. Um, what we should do, what is look at what we have currently in there under chapter twenty-eight. And then look at some uh, surrounding anti-funneling ordinances and see what, where, where they want us to go with it.
I think that would be useful because I, it's always a challenge.
Yeah. Because currently they just restrict it by dimensions on the lot. I know Hamburg Township had a really extensive one, but it's because they have thirty-five hundred uh, lots that are on the lakes.
Right, they got public marinas.
Yeah. Many more than four boats is considered a marina by Eagle. So um, they would have four unrelated boats, so.
Or so.
Yeah.
Registration.
Registration.
Considered a marina.
Yeah.
So if you got three jet skis and a pontoon boat, you're officially a marina.
Well, I think you, they have to be registered to different people. So we're talking about three. Boats that are not under the same ownership. And that's what the, that's what the, when you get more anti-funneling regulations, because right now you're restricting it just on the boats. Um, you might restrict it based on the ownership and based on everything else too.
I think the ownership's the one that.
Yeah.
Needs to be looked at.
Yep.
So do we need to make a request to do that?
Yeah, I mean, if you could prepare what you want to do, for us to discuss at the board. Something, just email it to me or something.
I can help you, Mike.
Okay, I'll just, so note off, we'd like to review the funneling ordinance, understand opportunities for improvement.
If we could understand more specifically what you have in mind or, yeah.
I have a couple, we're wrapping up. We take this, I've got two questions. One, read about the property south of I ninety-four that was assigned by Sylvan and Lima Township. Is that?
I don't know anything about that, that's Doug.
Talk about the four twenty-five agreement.
I think.
Yeah.
So what?
What's, is that something we're going to see? What, what is someday?
So.
They had to, they would be forming a planning commission for it.
Right. That's, that's not going to be us, it's going to be three commissioners from each township. Not necessarily us commissioners, but that would form a um, a joint planning commission for the four twenty-five.
So that got anything to do with the city or is it just?
The city wouldn't be involved in it. The city inspired it because they were thinking of annexing the, that property from our township and from Lima Township. So um, by going through this four twenty-five agreement, this prevents that annexation. So.
We can talk more about.
Yeah.
The thing I'm curious about is the property up on McKinley across from North School. There's a church after thirty-five years is, there's a lot of stuff going on. Affects us directly. You used to not be able to see my house driving down McKinley and that's completely cleared now. And we stand out like a sore thumb and we still don't know what's going on over there.
The church is clearing trees or something or?
Yes, lots of them. They cleared trees for the permit for the county to build a parking lot into it and it's twelve acres.
Is that Sylvan Township or is it city?
That's Sylvan Township. The city, they requested that the city annex them, but the city refused. Because why would you annex a church-owned property? You don't get any tax revenue for it and you'd have to pay for all the services. So, so um, I'm.
To put in a parking lot, wouldn't they have to come through?
They didn't put in a parking lot. They put in like a temper, is it a temporary parking lot for construction? Yeah.
Uh, for the county road permit.
County road, something.
For the entrance, for the apron to be built into it. So we haven't seen anything or heard anything about plans. I'm just wondering.
We haven't received any official um, official applications, but I would imagine they're going to put a church there.
You think they even know they need to do one?
Yes.
Well, I'm sure. They've had that property for a long time, right?
They definitely, they definitely, they definitely know they have to get a permit. They haven't submitted anything yet.
So they've had some contact on? Okay, well, it's not, they're not flying blind on.
Probably what they've done so far isn't illegal.
No.
Need a permit to do.
No, you don't. We don't have any uh, ordinances protecting trees or anything, so you can clear cut a property.
There, there was some statements made that the township actually tagged all the trees that had been removed. And there was like uh, probably a couple hundred of them all the way around the property. But we've still never gotten to the bottom of that, but it's, I'm adjacent to it. And I actually tried to buy that piece of property forty years ago when they bought it and the bank called me and said, you missed it. It's been kind of, yeah, I don't, I don't mind the idea of a church. I just, I would like to know what's going on. The neighbors around there would like to know what's going on and.
So to be able to put a church there.
Well, you should know.
So to, to be able to put a church there, they would need to have a special use permit and a site plan review. So you will, you will be noticed, so.
Just join the church and ask the pastor.
Well, I know somebody that goes there. I financially, I don't think they've got the money to do church.
They still on firewood then with all the trees they cut in?
Those were all uh, they call the ironwood, the, with the big Osage orange. Rock hard trees, really. Uh, but they own the, the church building in, it's on a orchard.
They sold that.
Did they sell it?
Mm-hmm, two years ago.
Oh, good.
Was it turned into apartments?
Somebody wanted to, but I don't know whatever happened.
I didn't realize they sold it. That's, last time I talked to the pastor, he still had it, but that's when he was living in the rectory on the twelve acres. Alright, well, he, we'll see it when the time comes, I guess.
Maybe.
Okay.
I don't, is a minister living there in the rectory? I don't think so.
No, there's, it, I, it appears to be vacant.
Yeah. So. It's too large for.
Yeah, he, he didn't feel right living there anyway. He didn't, he's been the friendliest.
Do we have any other?
Over the last several decades.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to, you're in a meeting? Second by Tom?
Yes.
All fair say aye.
No, I think this um. When you build a church, there's Jackson Road there. That Dave Adams, I mean, worked on building that church on Jackson Road for years.
Did he?
He finally passed away. And it got built smaller than what they anticipated. Jamie looked at the plans.
Jamie Bull.
Yeah, five different times Dave Adams.